Good morning. Today is November fifteenth. I want to welcome you all to this committee hearing. I'm joined today by Mr. Marquis Harris-Dawson and Ms. Nury Martinez. We have a quorum. If you could read the agenda?
Yes, sir. Item number one is an Ethics City Attorney Reports and Ordinances Relative to Amending the Los Angeles Municipal Code to Restrict Campaign Contributions and Fundraising by Developers and Solicitation and Disclosure of Behested Payments by City-Elected Officials. Item number two is an Ethics Commission Revised Report Relative to Proposed Amendments to the Conflict of Interest Code for the Housing Authority. This is a time limit file with the last day for council action being January twenty-fourth. Item number three is an Ethics Commission Report Relative to Proposed Amendments to the Conflict of Interest Code for the City Ethics Commission. This is also a time limit file with the last day for council action being January twenty-first. Item number four is a motion, Wesson Martinez, relative to authorizing L.A. City View Channel Thirty-Five and the Information Technology Agency to operate and maintain the city's electronic billboard channel. Item number five is a Chief Legislative Analyst Report and Resolution Relative to the city's position on House Resolution Two-Two-One-Five and Senate Bill One-One-Zero-Nine, which would expand the San Gabriel Mountains National Monument. Item number six is a CLA Report and Resolution Relative to the city's position on Senate Bill Twenty-Sixty-Two, which would prohibit the use of federal funds to support the Twenty-Twenty-Six World Cup unless the United States Soccer Federation provides equitable pay to the United States Women's National Team. Item number seven is a CLA Report and Resolution, Smith-Wesson et al., relative to the city's position on legislation that would ban the sale, possession, or use of any assault weapons, as well as any modification kits, and establish minimum standards for online social networks to require administrators of the network to remove and/or block any hate speech and/or violent content. Item number eight is a CLA Report and Resolution, O'Farrell-Crickorian, relative to the city's position on H.R. Eighteen-Fifty-Six, the Ending Homelessness Act of Twenty-Nineteen. Item number nine is a CLA Report and Resolution, Crickorian-O'Farrell et al., relative to the city's position on Senate Bill Six-Six-Five and any similar legislation that would authorize a county to use state funds to provide mental health services to individuals who are incarcerated in a county jail. Item number ten is a CLA Report and Resolution, Martinez-Sadio, relative to the city's position regarding the National Museum of the American Latino Act, H.R. Twenty-Four-Twenty, Senate Bill Twelve-Sixty-Seven, which would establish a national museum of the American Latino in our nation's capital. Item number eleven is a CLA Report and Resolution, Rodriguez-O'Farrell, relative to the city's position regarding H.R. Twelve-Fifty-Three, which would designate the United States Postal Service located in Pacoima as the Ritchie Valens Post Office Building. Item number twelve is a CLA Report and Resolution, Rodriguez-Curets, relative to the city's position regarding H.R. Five-Eight-Five, the Violence Against Women Reauthorization Act of Twenty-Nineteen. Item number thirteen is a CLA Report Relative to the Twenty-Twenty Council Recess Schedule.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Why don't we begin with public comment? So, some individuals are signed up for one minute. Others have signed up on multiple cards. You will get two minutes. So, we'll start off with, I believe this is Corey Smith, followed by Mr. Previn. And you guys will get two minutes. So, please, Mr. Smith, come forward.
Corey Smith, for the record. Good morning, you guys. Okay, so, developers and campaign contributions, disclosing of payments. Fully agree with this. I think that we need to be putting these developers in check. They're a little unruly because the next couple of items, we're talking about conflict of interest, which I have seen. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, if you're on Plum Committee and you own large properties and you are pushing for more large properties to destroy the neighborhood and create your own new neighborhood, I believe that to be a conflict of interest. So, in other news, I think I like the protecting the wilderness, you know, protecting the national or making it a national monument. We need more parks out here instead of concrete jungles. I also see that we're team ramrodding thirteen billion dollars of stuff for homelessness. But, you know, I believe we had a couple of billion already. And I know people are complaining about where that money went and all of that. So, I see we're trying to get more. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, maybe what happened to that. Let's see. Okay, we're banning assault weapons. So, what happens when corruption hits and the people with the assault weapons are now the only people with them and the people, you know, the general public can't have them? So, it's a power game. So, you want to remove our power to fight back if we need to. I am not for that. But, when it comes to the World Cup, I think that...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Previn, two minutes, followed by Mr. Mike Greenspan, two minutes. Please, come on forward. Thank you. Corey, you had your two minutes. Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Greenspan and... No, that, he just had it. So, you've got two minutes. Mr. Previn, your clock's gonna start ticking. You have two minutes with your last minute for general public.
Thank you, sir. So, that's one minute for the fourteen items on your... How many is it? Thirteen items on your agenda. Let the record reflect that. Thank you, sir. You know, you got some ethics items there. We're concerned about developers giving contributions. And I appreciate David Rue, his attitude on that, except for he doesn't take money from developers, is his kind of thing. He gives money to developers. So, that is a bit like by giving city property. And Mr. O'Farrell, who I think everybody knows took money from the Masaborsky LLCs, is really picking fights in his district. And I think that we should just get the ethics squared away. Channel Thirty-Five, sir, you have been abusing ritualistic. You've got an item here to drop Channel Thirty-Six from the portfolio or include it somehow. You know, I'm concerned that you use the power of your presidency and City Hall for politics. Now, it happened, like, for example, the other day, you had a regularly scheduled meeting with no items put before the public. But, Mr. Crickorian trotted out, not on the agenda, dozens of veterans for a kind of filibuster of politicians looking great. And, sir, nobody looks better than you. But, the problem is, is that we are all trying to raise our voice equitably. Other items you have on the agenda that I'm supportive of, Six-Sixty-Five, the Umberg measure. This is so that we can provide mental health services to individuals who are incarcerated. And even though it comes from a guy down in Orange County, I support it because I think it's the right thing to do, to treat people when they have to be incarcerated, if they have to be incarcerated. And, sir, I would just ask you to look at your committee schedule. And Streffan Fabel's been warned. Putting three committees at one P.M. is another effort to disenfranchise speakers who can only speak at committee in your crazy world, where out of the last two months, five meetings had no items for the public. Sir, that's a dirty rotten shame. And I hope you're not gonna bring that attitude to Supervisory District Two, because we're gonna blast you out of office, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if I can get Mr. Greenspan and Kendrick Rustard?
My clock is running. Thank you. Mike Greenspan, eighty-two Florida Gator, and I don't see L.A. Anyway, let's look at the first thing. You know, what took so long? Restrict campaign contributions and fundraising by developers, after everybody, of course, gets their campaign contribution from developers. It's kind of like this reverend who preaches against prostitution and then gets caught at the bordello. That's what it reminds me of. Now, let me skip to number eight. I believe, 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 believe. Why am I doing Porky Pig? Because it's a pork barrel, that's why. I mean, I saw something about this. And I'm specifically talking about Maxine Waters' bill, number, House Resolution One-Eight-Five-Six. Well, you see, with that, I saw there's gonna be some big facility, kind of pet project thing, having nothing to do with housing a person in it. That's why I say I believe, 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 believe. What, you know, what a pork project this is. It's really not about homelessness. It's about spending your pet project money and doing it under the guise of homeless. And as far as it's nice to have more open space, I hope the developers don't develop at first, but it would be nice to have that open space that you're talking about. And it took so long on the Ritchie Valens Center. He's been in dead how long? Since I was even before kindergarten? He's been dead. So, we take a while sometimes in government. And as far as, it'd be nice to add another Smithsonian. I remember in Washington, the classic question tourists ask, which way of the Smithsonian? They think it's just one building. And of course, the classic answer is which one? So, let's add another one to it. And it's been great to speak. And, well, look, ruins suck.
Thank you. So, if I can get Kendrick, and after Kendrick, I think it's Nancy, is it Kraut, and Rob? I thought I saw Rob. Rob Quan. Yes, please identify yourself. He gets two. Is this Kendrick?
Yep.
Okay, Kendrick gets two. Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Yes. Item number one, in terms of getting contributions from developers and ethics. Basically, I was running for City Council for District Fourteen. I withdrew to support Jamie T. Harina. She's a thirty-two-old Latina from Highland Park, and I believe she can get more votes. She was number three in terms of fundraising at a debate at the City Club, where I'm a member. And CCA, the Central City Association, only invited Kevin DeLeone and Monica Garcia. And Jamie was number three. She had the most individual contributions in small dollar amounts, but she wasn't even invited to participate. So, there, especially District Fourteen, we have downtown added on to Boyle Heights up to Highland Park and Eagle Rock. The majority of the constituents are Latino. And basically, the result...
Now, you need to speak on an item or something. You get one minute for the agenda items and one minute for public comment.
Okay. Not sure how to direct this, but it's obvious that we've got Oceanwide that ran out of money, Chinese money, that was supposed to be used for manufacturing factories, as well as Metropolis in downtown. All luxury. We don't need more luxury. So, think of your constituents rather than getting money for your political careers. And, yeah, of course, I'm getting all kinds of weird looks at me. But, I know exactly what's going on in the city, and it's really sad.
Thank you. So, if I could get Nancy, Rob Quan, Barry? Barry, come on up, Barry. You have one minute. Please, when I call you, I'm gonna try to get to everybody. So, when I call you, don't be shy. Yes?
Hi. My name is Barry Levine. I would like you all to think globally and act locally, because all politics is local. Today, the House Intelligence Committee is hearing testimony on corruption in the Ukraine. And today, in the Rules Committee, we're talking about corruption in the city of Los Angeles and the perceived corruption in the city of Los Angeles. You have an opportunity to do something about that perception by passing this resolution on to the main council and passing that resolution, as was instructed by Proposition C, which passed overwhelmingly in the city of Los Angeles, instructing you, our elected officials, to do whatever you can to reduce the corruption of large sums of money in the political process. So, do the right thing, folks, please. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. And if I could get B. Darwish and Mello Desire. Yes, Mr. Quan.
I've got two minutes.
Yes, he does. No, no, give him two minutes. That's my mistake. Go ahead, Rob. But, remember, hold it. One on the items, one general public. Go ahead.
I want to thank Councilmember Rue and Wesson for their lack of leadership on this issue. Your defense of corporate personhood in this city is remarkable. This council has groomed the Ethics Committee's recommendations to fail. I hate to assume the worst, but my guess is that you will paint this hearing as the committee making a binary choice between ordinance A and B. If this council cared about real reform, you would roll up your sleeves and combine elements of both ordinances. Unfortunately, you'll probably just pursue some headlines and call it a day. Councilmember Rue's ordinance is riddled with loopholes that make it an unenforceable mess unless amended. It fails to cover ballot measure committees. It fails to include the full project team. It continues a laughable situation in which we ban certain individuals from contributing, but allow them to bundle and fundraise endlessly. It also fails to address dark money, which is gonna end up leaving enforcement to two years down the line. On the issue of behested payments, I refuse to accept the idea that corruption in politics is a necessary evil, not only a necessary evil, but an essential evil we must accept with charity. It's disheartening to see organizations like Alliance for Justice spread misinformation, making claims that are blatantly untrue, like the L.A. Justice Fund would be impacted by these proposals. I fought for the L.A. Justice Fund and is still fighting for it, so we can get funding renewed. I think it's also worth noting that up until a few months ago, not one member of the Rules Committee had ever filed a behested payment disclosure. Not one of you. I really genuinely believe Councilmember Ferraro would be rolling over his grave watching this council. As we're having impeachment hearings in D.C., this council continues to roll through a culture of corruption. We've seen little notice for these meetings. The most uninformed debate I've ever seen in these council chambers occurred on this item back in the spring. Council President Wesson, you've been fighting against reform in L.A. for thirty years.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, did we get Nancy, Ms. Desire, B. Darwish, Carolyn Carolina Goodman, and Daniel Sosa? If I called your name, please come forward. I want to try to get everybody, but we've got work to do. So, please come forward. Just come on. Good to see you identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. Carolina Goodman with the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles. It was exactly thirty years ago, November nineteen-eighty-nine, when the Cowan Commission submitted its recommendations for comprehensive ethics reform in the city. I'm proud to say that the commission included the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles. The nineteen-eighty-nine City Council devoted a dozen meetings to this issue, and within just three months, placed Measure H before the voters of Los Angeles. This is in contrast to our current council. In the eight months since Ethics Commission issued its recommendations, we saw only two hearings on this matter, and we still have a long way to go. I'm also here to strongly encourage you to consider a ban on contributions from corporations and LLCs similar to New York City and San Francisco. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning, committee members. My name is Daniel Sosa. I'm a cannabis policy advocate and a social equity advocate. I'm also a mentor and hopeful partner to several social equity applicants. I would like to speak on an issue that I think you guys are already aware of and I believe sympathetic to. The system of processing the applications in Phase Three was inherently flawed. It was a timestamp system, which was supposed to be a first-come, first-served process. But, it really wasn't a first-come, first-served process. It was a fastest computer, you know, process, and it strongly favored sophisticated, well-capitalized groups over authentic social equity applicants. And I really appreciate Herb Wesson's letter to the DCR. I think the process needs to be either scrapped and started over, or all of the applications need to be processed. And I also think that you guys should really consider lowering the sensitive use distance between dispensaries to two hundred feet.
Thank you. Thank you. So, if we could get Ms. Desire, and do I have a David Darwish? Leona Beatty? Please identify yourself.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Reverend Dr. Mello Desire. And I'm specifically speaking on H.R. Eighteen-Fifty-Six. It says that it was introduced by Waters in March of twenty-nineteen, when it was actually introduced to her by me in twenty-sixteen. In twenty-thirteen, we had portions of H.R. Eighteen-Fifty-Six already given to Marquis Harris-Dawson, Mark Ridley Thomas, District Two, and CD Eight. I find it appalling that Hollywood Council is able to bypass me and have this be heard in a committee for Crickorian and Mitchell to sign off on it without even notifying me. Blanca Jimenez, for five years, had blocked me from meeting with Ms. Waters, and I put her name on it as credit because she's my Congresswoman. But, I find it disgusting being born and raised in Watts, and not a goddamn thing has happened but her name on an educational building. H.R. Eighteen-Fifty-Six is thirteen billion federal dollars to fix the homeless crisis for a hundred and seventy thousand black families. I'm not talking about people of color or immigrants. I'm talking about black families. Right now, Lassa, who co-signed on this bill, also received the same H.R. Eighteen-Fifty-Six proposal, which is the End Homelessness Now Act, twenty-twenty, not twenty-nineteen. And this was submitted in twenty-sixteen. So, I appreciate if Blanca Jimenez do her due diligence and actually have the Congresswoman meet with the constituents before she puts her name on something that she didn't authorize. I'm disgusted by this. I'm disgusted by this. And Lassa took away the only African-American continuing of care representative. How can that be when fifty-four percent of us is black? That's homeless. You use us for data, but you can't bring us to the tables to fund our contracts. Shame on you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I'd like Jose Casares as well. Is it Quinn Two? And, come on up, Ms. Yes, you. And Ms. Beatty?
Yes, Ms. Beatty. I'm Leona Whitney Beatty. I'm a black female cannabis entrepreneur who's worked in this industry for five years. I'm a single mother who has high hopes for my future and that of my five-year-old son and the possibility of finding cannabis, opening a cannabis business as an SEP applicant. I'm also an advocate for social justice and social equity in this space as a board member of Supernova Women. We encourage women of color to be stakeholders in this space. I'm very disturbed about what's going on. And the letter that you sent, Pat Packer, dated the twenty-eighth, which you advocate for the full suspension of Phase Three licensing. I participated in Phase Three and in good faith. And I was logged in Position Forty-Five. I've paid my fees. I'm on the map. And while I wholeheartedly believe that there are way better ways for us to distribute social equity in this town, a merit-based system based would be a great start instead of a first-come, first-served rush. It's still unfair to us who participated in the process in good faith to completely unwind that process. It places us applicants in an even worse position. I encourage you to process my application and all the other applications. That's the only way you can do it.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could also get Sean McMorris and Theodore Lewis, please identify yourself, sir.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Jose Casares. I'm a partner to a social equity cannabis license retail applicant, and I'm a strong advocate of social equity. I think it's important that the city get this process right. The way that the process was set up with the timestamp system favored big-money corporations rather than those who are authentic social equity applicants. I think it's important that City Council either start the process over or process all applications received. However, if you choose to process all applications, I think you also must lower the distance requirement to two hundred feet between dispensaries, especially in areas of high population density, so that more people have the opportunity to benefit from the social equity program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Quinn Two, and I'm Southern California Council for Alliance for Justice. We are a national association of a hundred and thirty organizations representing a broad array of groups committed to progressive values and the creation of an equitable, just, and free society. We are the leading experts on the legal framework for nonprofit advocacy efforts, providing definitive information, resources, and technical assistance that encourages nonprofit organizations to fully exercise their rights to be active participants in the democratic process. We're here today because of our concern about the ban on behested payments, part of the developer ban on item number one. We believe that the behested payment issue would result in a huge impact on the ability for nonprofits to raise money for legitimate and worthy causes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself, and just tell me who you are, and I'll get the time straight.
Yeah. My name is Sean McMorris.
Okay, Sean is signed up for Two.
Yeah. I'm with the Represent Us, which is a nonprofit organization with chapters all over the country. We support anti-corruption reform in cities. I'm here to support the Ethics Commission's recommendation for a developer ban on contributions. It's very thorough. They did their research. They did their outreach. They included the public. And I think that this is the right and just thing to do. Please support that. We also support a ban on corporations and LLCs. These LLCs are very easy to create, and there's, in most cases, there's zero ownership information. They are tools for campaign money laundering, and they make it very difficult on the Ethics Commission and the public to find out who's behind these donations. And they use it to skirt the campaign donor limit laws currently in place. Finally, I support a ban on soliciting restricted sources for behested payments. It's important to note that banning developers, lobbyists, and contractors does not prevent the people who are associated with these entities from donating to nonprofits. It just ensures that they do it out in the open, so that the public knows who's behind those donations and not behind the curtain of an LLC or a developer. And I also want to support a lowering of the disclosures threshold for behested payments to a thousand dollars. This is just good governance. It provides transparency for the public, so we know who's giving and potentially why. That said, I hope that you will support all of these things. And we think that it's important that you stand for the people and not simply money in corporate interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please identify yourself.
Hi. Good morning. B. Darwish. And this is a general comment for Council District Thirteen, Councilman O'Farrell. Just wanted to say, Mr. O'Farrell is corrupt. A family needs utilities to live, but your office won't help because the family did not contribute to your campaign. And when we call your office and we said we need help, all you say is, I won't help, because the asphalt is more important than a person's life. Thank you.
Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi. Good morning. My name is David Darwish, and this is for District Thirteen, Mitch O'Farrell. For the record, I need utilities. I have a house, and I cannot get utilities because you paved the street. But, I see down the street, down the road here, you're cutting the street. And he won't do anything, and he's discriminating against elderly, against disabled, and he's a corrupt creature. Unless you donate to him, he won't do anything to you. And he won't help anybody in his district. The silver-like area is run down, a lot of sidewalks, streets. Everything is run down. He won't do anything. Pay me first. He's corrupt. He should be out of here. And it's bad for you all that a creature like that sits on the seat here as a councilperson.
Next, and then following you will be Mr. Wayne Spindler. Yes, sir.
My name is Theodore Lewis. I'm a Tier One Social Equity applicant, which basically means that I'm considered low income, and I have a cannabis conviction on my record. I'm here because, you know, I've applied for the Phase Three Retail License in South Los Angeles. And as you know, that the system was actually timestamped. And I believe it was, those of us who are disproportionately impacted, don't have the resources to, like, proper internet connection and things like that, we were not able to actually, what is the word? We were not actually able to compete within this race, this timestamp race, in order to receive our licenses for, you know, the medical marijuana... for, you know, the medical marijuana dispensaries. And we're also pushing for a 200-feet boundary between medical marijuana dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler, two minutes. One minute on the items and one minute generally.
Yeah, start with the plantation items and go to plantation public comment. Number one, fuck number one. I don't want to behest my city official. I just want to blackmail and pay off my city official, especially that bald-headed Marquisi. Number two, the City Ethics Commission, they ain't nothing but fat cunts on there anyway. They don't know about us. I like to go out on the South Line and smoke cigarettes with Mr. Wesson and make deals. So fuck number two. Number three, fuck number three. Conflict of interest? Ain't no such thing. Look at Mr. Fubble. He gets to lie on TROs and go up to Mr. Herman. See, there's no conflict of interest. It's imagination. Number four, fuck number four. Number five, fuck number five. Number six, fuck number six. Number seven, fuck number seven. Eight, fucking eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fucked up. Now, get to my one bloodsucker minute. And we'd like to address, and I thank Mr. Marquisi Harris Dawson for turning his head around and facing it to me, bowing in shame to the power of the white man from Encino who's black on the inside. And I really appreciate the fact of this great respect he pays me. That's what they used to do with me in the Muslim countries when I would get off the plane called advisor, and I would go, "Ah, look at ya, da-da-ba-dah." And they would go, "Hooda-da-da-da-da." And then we'd blow them all up. But again, I'm not responsible for that little Iranian revolution. That wasn't my fault. Herb Wesson, though, you drudged the draft. You went to school when you didn't really study. You're a fucking draft dodger.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Wayne Williams, followed by Mr. Herman. Mr. Williams gets one minute. Yes, sir.
I'm Wayne Williams with the California Clean Money Campaign. And the gentrification of our city is a sad situation for so many while creating high profits for development projects that exacerbate the housing crisis. It is due to extreme shortage of affordable housing that we have this problem. What if the profit developers, what if the for-profit developers didn't have the strong influence in City Hall? Would the city make developers provide replacement housing for those they displace? The consideration is just one of many that makes us raise the need to pass these three reforms to remove undue influence in these difficult times for so many. We ask support for the Ethics Commission proposal to ban developer contributions. The city needs to ban contributions from corporations and LLCs. And we support the ban on soliciting funds from restricted sources and behested payments.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman gets two.
So we must prohibit soccer. It's a wetback sport. This is the United States. We play rugby. And for this reason, COL 18 U.S.C., 242, 18 U.S.C., 245, for the record. Krikorian, federal legislative program by Maxine Waters for $13 billion for homeless housing service nationwide, including permanent housing and rental assistance, when, where, and why. That's deprivation and depriving disabled Americans the right to housing. I will submit for the record today my complaint against HUD that the City of Los Angeles, a municipal corporation, has retaliated and used different tactics of restraint, like TROs, to suppress me from free speech. In addition, now to my one minute, Yovanie Ovich, if we lose our edge, bitch, pointed out of order corruption. Homeland Security, 213-330-9803. Shoot the nigger. Shoot the nig. Shoot, shoot, shoot. Because all that we're doing under 0950529, Bagdad Zarian of Pasadena versus the United States, we're fucking up Los Angeles. We fucked up California, Maxine Waters. You're a homeless bitch crisis. You need to eat cake. You need to eat a cupcake and stick the frosting down your throat, you fucking cunt, bitch, whore. You haven't done nothing for me in housing, and you tell that Marquisi Dawson. I'm glad not to see his fucking face. You reckless, stupid motherfucker. 42 U.S.C., 1983, asshole.
Okay, that concludes, that concludes public comment. Mr. Rue, I'd like to have you come forward. Did I miss somebody? What was your name? I didn't hear you? We're here, come on up. Did you sign up in the back?
Yeah, I signed up.
No, what's your name again?
Herbert Gomez.
No, it's not on there, but we'll give you the benefit of the doubt.
Cool. Greetings, Rural Committee members. My name is Herbert Gomez. I am a Tier One Social Equity applicant. 10 days after I turned 18 years old, the police raided my house where I live with my mother and younger siblings. I was found with nine grams of marijuana, and I was arrested in front of my family. I spent the next three years of my adult life on probation. I applied for a Phase III retail license. I've been holding a property since January of 2018, and rent started at $18,000 per month. I would like to ask that you process all of the applications and lower the distance requirement to 200 feet between dispensaries. They will give more real social equity applicants like myself the opportunity to participate and benefit from this program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes public comment.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I want to first thank you, Mr. Wesson, for scheduling these very important reforms in committee today. Today's been a long time coming, and these reforms are something I have fought for since I entered office and something I believed in since well before then. When I first ran for City Council, I pledged not to accept donations from developers with business before the city. I didn't do this because I was against development. In fact, just the opposite. I believe in healthy, smart development. And I believe it relies on community engagement, a clear set of rules, and a well-functioning government. But you can't have these things without first having faith in the system. We face a crisis of trust in our city government, and this cannot be ignored. Even before I ran for office, the lack of trust was apparent in Los Angeles. And since getting here, I've seen how this perception overshadows the great work of countless public servants and how it slows down progress. I have seen how it inhibits meaningful planning reform, how it delays or derails important projects, and how it erodes the public's faith in our ability to respond to their needs, whether it's homelessness, environment, or quality of life. True or not, the perception of corruption in City Hall exists, and it affects everything that we do. That's why the first piece of legislation I fought for in City Hall and why I have introduced and reintroduced this legislation for the past four years. This is about reform and frankly, why I came to City Hall. I believe we have a fundamental turning point in our city's history where we have a chance to chart a new course and usher in a new era of public engagement and civic action. But to do this, we need to change how business is done in City Hall. To gain the faith of Angelinos, we need to give them a government worth believing in. And to fix the entrenched perceptions that undermines the public's trust, we need to start at its very roots. I don't believe in Band-Aid solutions for a broken system. I believe in fundamental reform and system-wide change. This is the only way to truly change the culture in City Hall and change civic life in Los Angeles. We have an opportunity here to be absolutely clear on the issues of special interest in our politics. There is no greater investment than in our relationship with the public. There is no greater cause in the health of our democracy. And I urge you to wholly pass these reforms and begin a new chapter in our city's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me bring up the department folk. If we could have, do we have City? Wait, I think we have some. Ethics? Ethics? Heather, you want to come up? Okay, as they're coming up, since public comment is over, Madam Clerk, why don't we do this on Items Two and Three? We'll adopt the Ethics Commission's report. Item Four will adopt the motion. Items Five through Twelve will adopt the CLA report and resolutions. Item Thirteen will adopt the CLA report. And without objection, those items will be deemed approved.
Thank you, sir. There's just a correction to the agenda language for item number 12. It is H.R. 1585.
Okay, well, let's make sure we incorporate that correction.
Thank you.
All right. Members, we've got folk here from Ethics and the City Attorney's Office. I wanted to open it up to any questions that you might have. Are there any questions? Okay, well, if there are no questions, I do want to thank Mr. Rue for, you know, your hard work on this issue. And I want to acknowledge all of the people who came today to testify, those in particular who are concerned about reforming the way that the Council does business. Because of the people and the partnership with this Council, this government, you know, we've done a series of things. In 2011, we put Charter Amendment H on the ballot. We approved it and put it in place in 2012, and that restricted contributions from contractors, commissioners, and things of that nature. Over the last eight years, we had a matching funds program that went from a one-to-one match to a six-to-one match. And we've lowered the threshold to qualify to get that max from $25,000 to $20,000 to $11,500. We altered the dates of our election in city government in hopes to get a bigger turnout and one that represents the diversity of this city. So I do want to thank all of you for working with us on these things. We've done a lot, but yes, we still have a lot to do. But again, thank you for your work. And today, members, I think we need to proceed in incorporating a lot of the, or some of the suggestions that have been made to us. So what I'd like to do is, Ms. Martinez does have a question, and then...
I do. It's just a question, but overall, I think I also want to commend your work on this issue, and Mr. Rue, you as well. I think if there was a way to legislate or police ethics or morality, I think a lot of this issue of perception, which I know one of the speakers spoke of, would hopefully go away. But that's not something we can do. And coming from a district whose residents are not independently wealthy, or for that matter, a district who developers don't necessarily want to develop in, you know, it's interesting to me in terms of the conversation and how people sort of are categorized. Not all districts are created equal. And so I think that's something that needs to be noted. But I did have a question about timing. I know that in the report you stated you needed some time to, for the database to be operational. So what does that mean in terms of timing for us to go live on the database in order for this particular item to be applied to what we're going to approve today? What does that timing look like?
One of my concerns is that we will not be able to be even available, even if we move very rapidly, for the 2022 election because the fundraising window opens up in March of 2020.
18 months prior to when you're running for office, right?
So this is very distressing, yes.
So tell me a little bit about that, because I know it's going to take resources to do it as well in terms of manpower and also time. So realistically, what timeline are you looking at? So that we're very clear in terms of your needs and the time it's going to take you to create this database. I just want everybody to be clear about that.
Just a note that the ordinance actually has an operational date where it would, currently in the draft ordinances, it would start on, with the general election for 2022 because in discussions with the Ethics Commission, it was clear that they would not be operational with the database for March of next year.
Right. And how many, I think the real question you have is, how many months would it take to make, put the project together? Do we have an estimate? Eight months?
In our staff discussions, based on this general election for 2022 date, we did feel confident that that timeframe is something that we could have the database up and running for.
By the general election in 2022?
The fundraising window opening for the general election in 2022. Yes, that's correct. So that would be March.
Do you anticipate any other delays? Or what else do you need from this body in order for you to meet that timeline?
Well, we think that the most important thing, we mentioned in our staff report that there would be new positions required to create the database and to keep it up and running. We mentioned a senior management analyst, a management analyst, and two programmers. And we currently believe that the sooner that we could get the programmer positions, the better that that would be for us to be able to get things sort of up and running. If this is something that we move on relatively quickly and we're able to get those people hired and in place, we don't foresee any major hurdles in terms of...
And are those individuals going to be responsible for actually creating the database from scratch?
Yes, ma'am.
So they have, okay.
Yes, in the best-case scenario, it would probably take at least nine months for this to be up and running, which is why March of 2020 is not an option, even if we had the staff in place today.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay.
If there is any way that we thought we could get it done by March, and if any of the staff thought we could do it, that would be very much better, obviously. But I guess I am being told that it'll take, by the time people are aboard, it'll take as much as eight months.
All right. You know what, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I also want to compliment our colleague, Councilmember Rue, who started on this campaigning some six years ago. I remember sitting on panels with you raising this issue, and it's been, it's a heavy lift. And you and the staff have gotten it this far, and it sounds like we have two and a half more years to go before it's reality. But I think it is absolutely the right thing to do to raise the level of transparency and clarity about how our campaigns are funded as elected officials. Like Councilwoman Martinez, I share her concerns that all districts are not the same, all parts of the city are not the same. And like a lot of things we do, this is one of the things where everybody would get treated the same. the same. And I think I'd love to see much more examination of this idea of behested payments. Just, you know, for a point of fact, in 2010, the biggest part of the economy in the eighth district was the nonprofit sector. The biggest part. So bigger than real estate, bigger than manufacturing, bigger than all those other things. Biggest part was the nonprofit sector. From the moment the behested payment suggestion was proposed, nonprofits started calling me saying, "Hey, this donor dropped off," because they said they don't want their gift tainted by the fact that they have a relationship with you and a relationship with our organization. And so that's the other side of the proposal that I think needs a really, really hard look. In this day and age, the last thing I want to be a part of is anything that takes resources away from poor people. Frankly, no matter what the reason is, we're just not in the position to do that. And so I, I'm eager to take a hard look at, one, what we're proposing, what's been done in other places, and what the potential impacts will be.
Thank you, and, and well said, Mr. Harris-Dawson. So, members, I know the clerk has some suggestions, recommendations from the chair, but I think I'll start off. So what I'm going to recommend is that this committee adopt Draft Ordinance B, that we request that the City Attorney's Office, with the assistance of the chief legislative analyst and the Ethics Commission, report back on the potential application and restrictions on this LAUSD component of this. I want to request that the City Attorney's Office, with the assistance of the Ethics Commission, to report back on the consistency between Draft Ordinance B and Charter Amendment H, the implementation ordinance. We want to refer to, refer the Ethics Commission report dated July 10, 2019, to the Budget and Finance Committee for consideration of budget and staffing costs for the, for the implementation of the developer database, as indicated on Page Two in the report. And this goes to the point of the behested payments, instruct the CLA with the assistance of the Ethics Commission and the City Attorney's Office to report back on a comprehensive review of behested payment ordinances and best practices throughout the state of California and the United States as well. And the last bullet point that I have is to instruct the CLA with the assistance of the Ethics Commission to report back after the 2020 election cycle on the cost difference, difference between running a campaign in 2015 to 2017 and then running a campaign in 2020. So if there are no objections, then I recommend we move that, yes.
Should I have one comment on the behested payments? Because I know the commission as a whole has been very concerned about the issues that have been raised by Councilman Harrison-Dawson. The, I'd like to reiterate, at least with the idea of perhaps allowing the C to go forward in the way that the Alliance for Justice indicated, which is that we move to, one of the other recommendations was to move to disclosure at the level of 1,000, and the additional disclosure, we think, would be very helpful.
Well, what we want to, what, what we want to do is, we're not saying that we're not going to move to tighten up the behested payments component. We appreciate all of the work that the commission has done. I think that a lot of the concerns that were mentioned by Mr. Harris-Dawson are concerns that are shared by a lot of members on this council. So we want more data, more information, and, you know, like I said when I started out, if you look at what we've done as a council from 2011 to now, working with the Ethics Commission, working with your folk, working with the people, we've made a lot of adjustments to make things fairer and more transparent, and I believe we will continue to do that. And unfortunately, sometimes you just can't do everything at one time, but I think that the recommendations that I have made are recommendations that we should be able to move through this body, and that's why I made them. So thank you for your comments. And, members, with that said, I would recommend that, without objection, we deem this item approved.
As amended. Thank you, sir.
All right. Is there any additional business before this committee?
That clears the desk.
This committee's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.